And again, this is Let's Talk Call-In Radio.
Yes, this is Let's Talk.
Oh, my gosh.
Getting to the root causes of the important issues of the day. This on-the-air community forum believes your voice matters and welcomes all thoughts and views without judgment. Please join today's conversation by calling 415-663-8492 or 8317. 415-663-8492 or 8317. Your hosts today, Stephen Hurwitz on the board.
At the board.
At the controls. Starship KWMR.
That's right.
And Shelley Rug.
Good morning.
Good morning. And I'm Paul Raffel. And when you call in, when you do call in, because of course you're going to call in, the number is 415-663-8492. When you hear the phone ringing, just hang on. You'll hear a little noise that will put you in the system. Wait till you hear Stephen say you're on the air and then give us a name. Turn your radio down so we don't get any feedback stuff going on. And please, keep the language clean. This is live radio. And we need to be cognizant of that fact at all times. And today's topic?
Yes, what are we going to talk about today?
We're going to talk about the town hall meeting that's happening tonight, this very evening, at the Dance Palace in Point Reyes Station, which is a meeting with State Senator Mike McGuire, County Supervisor Dennis Rodone, representatives of some of the agencies around here, federal, state, and county agencies, and the Alliance of Coastal Marin Villages. We're going to be discussing, it's an update from the meeting that was held back in, what, 2017, about, I don't know, 18 months ago, something like that, where concerns were raised about the impact on our little villages of the tourist trade, the influx. We've become, definitely become a destination, thanks to not just the park, which is always a huge draw, of course, but because of the wonderful businesses that we have here that are supplying great things and clean food and wonderful tasty nibits.
And oysters.
And oysters and all that, all that West Marin that we love about West Marin.
The wonderfulness, yes.
Is attracting a lot of people these days. And that, of course, brings some infrastructure problems. So if you were to, if you wanted to go online and check this out, there is, on the ACMV, let me just get the, here we are, pointreystation.org/meetingsandannouncements. If you go to the pointreystation.org site, which is the Point Reyes Village Association, you'll see a list of PDFs that are all about the subjects that are going to be discussed this evening. And there it's to do, let's just go down the list, garbage, sharing the road, speeding and traffic problems, parking problems, and then there's a PDF that is, that has recommendations, long-term recommendations from the, let's call them ACMV, the Alliance of Coastal Marin Villages, which I have to say, I think that's a wonderful idea, that all the, all the local village groups are getting together as a body and addressing these issues with our elected representatives and the agencies involved. So it's all good.
Right. Yeah, we had talked recently about incorporating, the areas incorporating and, you know, organizing is the first step.
Yeah.
Towards something like that.
I mean, the ACMV, it could be the body to incorporate all of West Marin, who knows? If we wanted to do that, I'm sure, that's a long way down the line.
Right.
So there are questions, you know, do we, part of the thing is that Mike McGuire said there's a lot of work still to be done. And Dennis Rodone and I wanted to bring folks back together to talk about the progress that has been made and how communication and collaboration between each of the agencies has improved.
Oh, that sounds like good news.
It sounds like good news. Well, what, what changes have been made, do you think, in the past 18 months?
Don't look at me.
I saw a sign posted that says, "Follow your dreams." Does that count?
Yes, I'm sure Caltrans put that one up. Yeah. Give us a call, 415-663-8492. Tell us your thoughts about all this and are you going to be there? And what are you hoping to hear from your elected representatives and from the agencies that operate the infrastructure around us? One big change, which was done just in time for this meeting, I have to say.
Crosswalks?
Good timing, the crosswalks. Instead of them looking like a, instead of coming down the hill into Point Reyes and seeing this double white line, what does it mean? Everyone thinks it's a stop sign, even though there's no stop sign now.
Right.
There's no stop sign. Now it's actually a pedestrian crossing. And they've done it on all the, in the middle of town.
Well, then how will we be able to tell the locals from the visitors?
Well, they're the ones who have the cheetah's license plate holder. So now that's going to improve things, I guess, as long as nobody's on the crosswalk. Never use those crosswalks. And...
I don't want to be a spoilsport about the crosswalks.
Yeah.
Because I think they're a big deal. But there's a shade there, there's a tree there, and people crossing, it can be difficult to see the people as they step off the curb.
In bright sunlight.
Yeah.
Right. And there's also the issue of a false sense of security that people might feel with a well-marked crosswalk.
Just walking right out there.
Right, right. And we still have to be careful.
Yeah, you're always trained, though, to look the person in the eye as you're crossing.
Yeah, I don't know. Sometimes that training falls away.
I look them in the headlights. Never.
But yeah, you want to know you have eye contact with the driver.
Oh.
Before you step out.
I don't think I have to do that.
Do you do that? You're not in that practice?
No. Interesting.
You have good angels.
Do you think parking is...
I'm a very lucky person, I have to say, yes.
Do you think parking is the problem that they're talking about, though? Is it that bad?
Well, let's look and see what they say here.
Well, I don't know, problems.
Park game.
This covers many, all the villages, by the way.
Oh, that's right.
So Bolinas, Inverness, Inverness Park, Marshall, Muir Beach, Alima, Point Reyes Station, Stinson Beach, Tamalas. Let's see, in Bolinas, illegal parking, yeah, they're all blocking driveways and...
So for people who want to know these PDFs, the parking problem one, has problems and proposed solutions for each village.
Hmm. So in Bolinas, for example, they want to regularly enforce parking laws, existing parking laws in downtown Bolinas, and towaway zones. You know, there's a lot of camping going on in Bolinas and always has been. So they're thinking about locally developed parking plan for downtown with time-limited and resident-only parking areas on a trial basis. That, you know, Inverness, there's overflow parking, double parking, unsafe reversing, backing out from the market. Public safety issues for pedestrians on Sir Francis Drake. Blocked driveways and blocking traffic at Chicken Ranch Beach.
That's a problem.
Marshall, illegal parking on Highway 1 due to inadequate off-highway parking for some visitor-serving facilities, which in Marshall would be Hog Island and, well, all the Airbnb's and, and the, dear, Marshall Store.
Okay.
And Tony's, although Tony's has a big parking lot. And will be open soon, by the way, Tony's Seafood will be opening soon.
Oh, that's exciting.
Um...
I do remember trying to back out of Tony's, though. It does feel a little scary sometimes. Hard to see.
Yeah.
With the curve in the road.
Well, sure, at the Marshall Store, for sure, because it's on a blind corner there. And Marshall also shares the concerns of Point Reyes Station about the parking problems there. Alima itself does not have a parking problem, it says, but shares the concern of Point Reyes Station residents. They're saying a parking lot could be installed at the vacant lot across from the Mostly Natives Nursery that's on the, on the back road there.
Oh, right. Sometimes we see large trucks, you know, large equipment stored there temporarily.
Yeah, the tree guys, don't they?
And they, I think they've also opened it up temporarily for events at, for the Parachute Days events at Love Field.
Ah.
It's been used for that.
There. Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
Muir Beach, of course, oof, what a mess. Illegal parking near them, no parking signs. To the beach parking lot, traffic jams, yeah, blocking residents, blocking parking for the community center, Muir Woods overflow parking. Yeah.
Well, you know, there's a thing about, you know, put up a sign that says, only, you know, residents can park here or don't park here. But if you don't offer an alternative, what are people going to do? They've come a long way. They're way away from everywhere.
Mm-hmm.
They don't have anywhere else to go.
And speaking as an ex-Marshall resident, now that I'm a...
And we miss you.
Now that I'm a Tamalas resident. The, I lived right on Highway 1, two doors from Hog Island, so, and I had space in front of my place for two cars at least, maybe three if you pack them in really well. But I would, not very often, actually, because I would put up sort of fake no parking signs. Everyone has no parking signs in Marshall, right? Some say towaway, but, you know. But people are coming to, like Hog Island or the Marshall Store, they just want to pick something up. They want to pick up a bag of oysters. They're not going to be there for hours. Sometimes there are some people who...
Who are there for hours.
And so they'll just kind of duck in. Usually they wouldn't leave anyone in the car. I mean, that would be what I would do. Well, I'll stay in the car. You go and get the oysters, honey. No. They all go off to the oyster company and I come along and, you know, my garage is blocked and I don't have a parking space in front, so...
Yeah, that's rough when you live there and you can't even park.
There is not, there's not enough parking for Hog Island.
Yeah.
Because, you know, they're parking all the way along the side of the creek to the north.
Right, they use valet service.
Valet service. I mean, they've done that for years and it's, it sure works well for the number of cars that they can, they can stack in there.
Pack in.
I guess they might start, I don't know if they're allowed to, but they might start parking up above. They have a piece, they bought a piece of land up on, up the hill from there.
Oh.
But I don't think they're allowed to use that for parking. Anyway, and then there's Point Reyes Station. Overnight camping resulting in vandalism, theft, drinking, raucous behavior, uncontrolled dogs, and human feces on the roadside. Lovely.
Nice.
On Third and C. Overwhelming parking issues in the village core. And it says, "Due in part to the large Caltrans signs at north and south ends of town, drawing tourists off the highway into Point Reyes Station." Well, that is the highway in Point Reyes Station.
Huh.
Anyway, "In search of public restrooms, parking and a playground."
Public restrooms.
Public restrooms, yes.
There's a name.
That's another one. And garbage, garbage and public restrooms. Tamalas, here's another one. It was Stinson Beach. Oh, man, what a mess that is in the summer. But Tamalas, parking shortage on Highway 1 on the weekends due to a lack of adequate parking spaces for tourists. Most residences have no driveways and residents must park on the street. Weekend motorcycle groups, oof, backing their motorbikes into curbs adjacent to businesses and residences and revving their engines as they always do, especially the Harley Boys. So, yeah, that's...
I'm just looking here at Stinson Beach, you know, the simple problem, illegal parking on the highway. Proposed solution, enforce the law.
Enforce the parking laws.
Again, where are these cars supposed to go?
Right. Yeah, I...
You can give them tickets and raise money.
Well, that doesn't, maybe, maybe there's a...
Hey, it looks like we have a call, by the way.
Yeah.
You're going to put them in the system?
Put them in the system.
Good job. Do it.
And...
And caller...
Hold on, caller.
Hold on.
And Stinson, yes, maybe one of the solutions somebody came up with was having more signs out on the freeway, you know, somehow.
Warning people.
The Stinson Beach parking lot is full, don't come over the hill.
I think they have something like that from Muir Beach.
They have that from Muir Beach, yeah.
Right.
Many places.
Hey, why don't we listen to see what the caller has to say?
Exactly.
You are on the air.
Hello.
What's your name?
Sally.
Hello, Sally.
Do you know to keep the foul language?
Keep the language foul.
It's all up here. It's all in the noggin, the foul language. I have a nest of profanity in my brain. I, I wanted to touch back on the, the Point Reyes public restroom issue, which I, because I...
Big one.
I had prepared to interview, what's his name, Levin, oh, Ken Levin, lovely gentleman. And for Epicenter on KWMR and Amanda Eichsted did the interview, but I prepped for it and read all the documents that you enumerate there, on the website there for the Point Reyes Village Association. And I thought that that was really fascinating, that they were recommending that people be directed not to those restrooms behind or by the playground, but that they be directed, tourists and visitors be directed to the Bear Valley Visitor Center.
I read that.
That's a little ridiculous.
And I found this really interesting, because the question is, how does the Bear Valley Visitor Center feel about that? And, and, I don't know, I just think the whole issue of waste and public restrooms and that kind of accessibility is really important.
Yeah.
Of course, they're all important issues that are being touched on, but that, the idea, it just seemed like a presumptuous, like I wondered when they met, if they anticipated what kind of reaction they'd get from the park.
Hmm. Well, I don't know. I, I think this was brought up in the last meeting, maybe the park was there. I'm sure there'll be someone from the park there today.
Yeah, that someone from the parks was there and they've talked a lot about the load on them with waste and dealing with waste.
Sure.
How can you realistically ask somebody to drive 15 minutes away to go to the bathroom?
When they need to pee, right.
Well, exactly. And, and so if you're thinking about commerce and the town and the commercial district of the town, which is in fact serving not only its residents but visitors, particularly, you know, such charming towns we're lucky to live, you know, in or near, so, I don't know. It, you, you know, it becomes a problem. And I just think it's an infrastructure problem because of the sewer or lack thereof in the town anyway.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, yeah, the Point Reyes residents, in their wisdom, many years ago, turned down the Coast Guard, the federal government's proposal that they build a septic system for the Coast Guard station, the Coast Guard accommodations there at the end of town. And they would make it big enough to service the town as well. And Point Reyes said, oh, we don't want that, we'll grow.
That's a mistake of the highest order.
And so, yeah, we're all relying in town here.
More toilets is not going to draw people.
On overflowing septic tanks. Well, you know, there's...
I mean, many years ago, there was that book that Andy Warhol published about this living in the city is, I can't remember even, I just remember him saying, there should be public showers for people, particularly to help homeless people.
They do have those.
Not in Point Reyes?
No.
A, they, they didn't necessarily have them several decades ago when he wrote this book, probably 70s or 80s when he wrote this book. And I'm sorry that I can't remember the name of it, but, I mean, God bless Andy Warhol for his civic-mindedness and practical approach, which also humane approach. So we do have an increased number of people in town who seem a little disenfranchised. And I, I really wonder every single day that I'm in town working, what is, what is this poor guy doing? Where's he going to use the restroom? The restroom was half locked.
It's really sad.
I'm just dimed by the whole thing. I'm not trying to be judgmental. I just think it's a really big problem.
It's a problem in cities across the nation and typically the solution is chase them away.
Move on, which is the solution that they're proposing here for Point Reyes Station.
And all that does is send the problem to somebody else. And, you know, we need to stop thinking that way and start trying to think of actual solutions to help people.
So what, another, another facility, another public conveniences, as we say in the UK. Where would that go? Buy a piece of land, maybe that, there's those two lots over next to Waldo Giacominis' old place above the wetlands that are for sale. County, buy that piece of land, put a beautiful bathhouse, shower house, toilets, massive toilets, there's room there for a septic, oh, fantastic idea.
Yeah, that's what I, no, I mean...
All right, let's do it, Paul.
I was thinking that, like, where would you add...
Maybe you can crowdfund it.
You can't, I mean, you, we've just got to add extra accommodations, I think, in that regard. And I, and I think the idea of having a lot, you see a line every weekend for those two little bathrooms by the park there.
Yeah.
And it's sort of makes me wonder, well, is this something that the moms and dads bringing their babies and little children to the playground, is this, is this impacting them, you know, how, I just wonder what...
It's a big problem.
So, so, yes, where on our precious and now incredibly valuable territory there, the properties, can, can you add? And all I could think of was just to add another thing right there, but I don't know if there's even room, another kiosk.
Yeah, well...
Oh, yeah.
I think it's so awkward, all these problems.
More porta potty, are the porta potties still next to the grandy, do we remember?
I've seen them.
They're still there.
I think there's two.
Yeah.
Behind the little visitor center booth.
More portaloos.
Oh, there are.
Get Ken Wilson to pony up some money. He owns all that property down there. He could pay for the portaloos. All his businesses, or the businesses that are paying him rent are making money for him, so.
Hmm.
Good luck with that. I wish you luck. And I will anon. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally.
And very interesting meeting, it will be taking place tonight, so...
And I'd say get there early.
Yeah, 6:30 is the meeting time.
If you want to be there, get early because it really fills up. And last time I was there about the bridge, I was standing outside the door.
Oh, dear, yes. You get there early, Stevie. And everyone, thanks for this show.
Thanks for calling, Sally.
Be nice to me.
And, and KWMR, I believe, will be recording the meeting. There will be someone, maybe Sally Phillips, will be up in the booth recording from the microphone. So please, if you're going to go to the meeting, wait until someone hands you the cordless mic before you start speaking, because it's, it's better that way for everybody.
You know, I have a, I have a suggestion for the speeding, and that is maybe a Mexican solution with the topes.
What do you mean?
Well, they have these speed bumps all through Mexico, and they really do serve slowing people down because you can't go over these things fast.
Well, the trouble with that is Caltrans, it's a highway, they call it a highway, it's a state Route 1. So we did bring that up with Caltrans many years ago in Marshall, because there's a couple of straight, after all the curvy bits getting to and from Marshall, suddenly there's these long straightaways and people love...
To go fast.
I know I do. Oh, no, I don't.
Oh, wait, what?
And, and they come, oof, they come haring through, through downtown Marshall. And, yeah, we, we really petitioned hard with Caltrans to put some, some kind of traffic quieting, as they say, like speed bumps or studs in the road or something. But, no, they won't do it, because it's a, it's a state highway and, you know, commerce must go on, unimpeded.
Even though it's, you're supposed to slow down to 25 miles per hour through town.
35 in Marshall, yeah, 25 here, yeah.
Speed limits are radar, radar enforced, though, according to signs.
I don't think it's working to scare people.
They are sometimes. No, every so, every so often Hawaii, Highway, Hawaii Patrol, I love that. The Hawaii Patrol turns up and with their radar guns on the straightaways in Marshall and especially after there's been another head-on. And, yeah, every so often they're there just to catch people, but, yeah, it's, it's a problem. Speeding locations in Bolinas, the Alima-Bolinas Road, yeah, of course, from Highway 1, everyone driving fast down along the balloon, the lagoon, balloon, lagoon.
You're doing a great job on the right.
Thank you so much.
Hawaii and balloon.
When do people come with the Hawaiian balloons? Give us a call, 415-663-8492. And tell us what you would like to hear talked about at this town hall meeting tonight. It's an important thing, I think, to have these town hall meetings and plaudits to, to McGuire and Rodone for, for doing this, putting themselves in front of people who might well be angry and frustrated about the state of affairs with the tourist trade here.
I think we have to face it, though, our community has changed dramatically. There aren't necessarily good solutions to the problems that come with that.
Certainly not cheap solutions. And where is the money going to come from? We are not an incorporated area, so all the money has to either come from Fed, state, or county, where there is no money to be gathered here.
Right, so we have to be able to make a good case for any assistance we might desire.
And luckily, we have a pretty good voice with the supervisors, I believe, but, you know.
Can I scoot in here for a second?
Please do.
And remind everybody that this is KWMR and we are in Point Reyes Station. We are supported by the Geography of Hope Pilgrimage Redefined, happening Saturday, March 16th, in Point Reyes Station, featuring John Francis Planet Walker, Keith, gosh, Bunny of Walking Water.
Glasses, you need glasses.
Yeah, I know, I got to put my glasses on.
They're right over here.
La la la...
Can you come and live with me? Kate Bunny of Walking Water and Deezee Ray Harp and Michael Preston of Run for Salmon, Weston Pugh of Sacred Dog Trail, and NPR's Steve Paulson and Anne Strainchamps. Tickets at gohevents.org.
And Lionsfilm just had a program with all, with several of those people on. It was very interesting.
Nice.
You know, we're also supported by Nick's Cove Restaurant and Cottages, located on the shores of Tamalas Bay, an historic, award-winning restaurant and bar with 12 restored private cottages. Nick's Cove is open seven days a week, serving local oysters, cheeses, and farm-to-table cuisine with fresh produce from their onsite garden. Reservations available at 415-663-1033 or at nickscove.com. And I'm going to throw one more in here to make up for what I missed. Local programming is underwritten by West Marin Senior Services, a local nonprofit offering assessment, care management, caregiver referrals, transportation options, and nutritional programs. Accommodations, including respite and short stays, are available at Stock Still House, a home for eight seniors. Information and volunteer opportunities available at 415-663-8148 or online at wms.org. And now back to, where are we back to?
Let's talk.
Yeah, we're, we're talking about traffic problems and I was looking at this mention of Alima Point Reyes Station and Inverness and Stinson Beach about stop signs that cause major backups. And I know I've experienced this and...
I'm with you.
Yeah, coming from Inverness, trying to get to Point Reyes, some... Yeah, coming from Inverness, trying to get to Point Reyes, sometimes the cars have been backed up from the stop sign at Highway One all the way to Inverness Park Market.
Yep.
An Inverness Valentine's Day massacre.
Right, exactly, that's like, at least a mile, maybe a mile and a half. And, you know, this is because there's a stop sign for the traffic coming from that direction, and the cross traffic is completely free-flowing. And so when there's a lot of influx of people, then that, that group at the stop sign is just stuck.
Yep.
So, yeah, I think we definitely need a plan.
Same with Bear Valley Road, and trying to get out there, and the Alima Crossing, yeah.
Now, that's an easy solution.
Okay, let's hear it, Stephen.
No, it's an easy solution, put a light there instead of a stop sign.
Traffic lights in West Marin, ah, see, this is, yeah, of course.
Or what about an additional stop, so that we don't have to have lights?
Additional stop, wow.
So.
Oh, for Highway One.
Stop here, yeah, so you, you'd have to put a couple more stops, so people take turns at least.
But traffic lights are timed so that if nobody's coming the other direction, then, then it flows, it'll have a right turn, a left turn sign, people will just flow through there, and when somebody comes north, then they'll get a chance to go through.
Right.
It's really an easy one.
Yeah, okay.
Well, you know.
I do it myself.
If you can convince Caltrans, that's, one of the solutions is that they have either police highway patrol, or other officers, or designated people.
Traffic directors.
In orange vests, directing traffic, letting people out.
On the high-traffic weekends.
On high-traffic days. I mean, yeah, I've seen, oof, I've, I saw the traffic, it was backed all the way up to the hill, up to the far end of Inverness.
Oh, Alima?
No, no, no. Backed up from the Green Bridge.
All the way to Second Valley.
All the way to Second, up, up the hill into the park.
Really?
Yeah, Sea, what is it, Sea Haven?
Sea Haven.
The turn-off to Sea Haven.
Past Chicken Ranch.
Yeah, I was at.
Oh, my gosh.
I was in a play at St. Columbus, and I came out, and there was this traffic, as far as I could see. So I turned left, I went up to Sea Haven instead, and, and it was all the way.
Oh, my.
Yeah, went out to the beach. It was lovely on the beach, everyone was in their cars.
It's a serious problem. I mean, most of us locals, I don't know about you guys, but we stay home.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, we just make a plan, okay, stock up the fridge, and we're just going to hunker down and stay home.
Part of the traffic problem, and we'll get to the road sharing thing in a minute, but part of the speeding problem here, Point Reyes Station, cyclists speeding through the village center, and in many cases, not stopping for stop signs, or pedestrians down Highway One on School Hill east of the gas station, and on B Street from First to Fourth Streets used as a shortcut, and on Highway One south from B Street across the bridge and through the intersection with Sir Francis Drake, there's cyclists speeding into town.
Yeah, right, right.
Same in Alima, and they don't stop for the, for signs, and maybe not for pedestrians, because they're doing thirty, thirty-five mile an hour coming down the hill.
Right.
How are they going to stop for someone stepping on the crosswalk? So, same in Alima, they come down Sir Francis Drake, and, you know, why, why stop? I'm a bike. So, and then there's the road sharing. Do we think that's improved?
No.
In the past eighteen months?
I'd never ride a bike, it's so dangerous.
Oh, well.
I feel frightened.
How could it improve? What, has something changed that would cause it to improve?
Well, enforcement, I guess, recommendations from the Alliance of Coast to Marin Villages, environment and safety, vegetation maintenance, first of all, so, so Caltrans should be mowing twice a year as they were supposed to originally. They used to spray twice a year.
Oh, dear.
Let them mow twice a year.
Yeah.
Road repair, so that everyone, nobody's kind of pushing around, trying to avoid potholes. No mumble strips, too late for that. We've got mumble strips all the way up to Tamales and beyond, actually, to Valley Florida.
There have been some very serious accidents between here and there, though.
Yeah, I think the problem is Marin Bike Coalition thought it would be a problem because people wouldn't want to cross the mumble strips, rumble strips, they are, because of the noise and because it's, oh.
It's jarring, it's jarring, yeah.
So it wouldn't give, you might not give the cyclists enough room.
I think background checks.
What?
Background checks?
For whom?
Before you can get a bicycle.
Oh, gosh, you're funny. You're cute, Stephen.
Enforcement, permits, Marin County should require all bike and motorbike events to have permits, not just when they are deemed to be races.
Yeah, that sounds like a good point.
Race and event organizers, suddenly you, I mean, it's like Wednesday afternoons, I think, when I was going back and forth to San Anselmo more frequently, coming back up through the windy bits up to Nikasio, there would be thirty bikers riding for abreast.
Bicycleists.
Uphill, around the, yes, bicyclists up around the curvy up the hills and not giving way, and, you know, has that improved? I don't think so.
If anybody listening has more complaints than what we're coming up with.
Hey, I'm just reading from the PDFs.
Well, you know, I talked, I talked to an avid bicycler, who I know from Southern California, and he comes up here once a year, camps in Alima to go ride his bike. And so he explained that part of the reason the bicyclists will take up the entire lane is because they consider it a safety need, that, that by doing that, they're, they're creating a safer situation, and, but the, the problem with that, for me, is that I, as a non-biker bicyclist, I don't know this theory, I don't know this concept, and so it causes bad feelings.
Of course.
And, so, you know, just to throw this out there, one idea that's come up many times about this particular issue, for me, is some kind of public art, something that, that isn't an ordinary Caltrans sign, that might have more color in it, more eye-catching, that can remind those cyclists, as they're at the top of that hill heading into Point Reyes, people walking here, animals, slow down, enjoy the nature, enjoy the, you know, something to remind them about where they are and to try and sort of change their mindset. And then on the other side of that, signs to help motorists kind of understand the cyclist a little better.
So they have, there are some new signs that have appeared on Highway One, which say that riders may use full lane. I'm not sure what that means. Give us a call, 124-15663-8492. We're now, we're talking about the, the town hall meeting that's happening tonight at the Dance Palace at 6:30, and the, some of the topics that are, some of the topics that will be raised there, and one of which is, I can, I can actually see that having a mass of cyclists that you would pass as if you were passing a slow-moving truck, that could work, except, most of the roads out here are double-yellow line all the way, especially Highway One.
Yeah, the visibility is not good.
We are not allowed to pass.
Right.
On double-yellow line. We're not even supposed to cross them to pass a cyclist.
Right.
Legally, anyway.
Someone answered your call, so we've got somebody. You, you asked and you got answered. Hello, caller, you're on the air, please identify yourself, and as Paul would say.
Keep it clean.
Amanda.
Oh, no, don't let her on again.
My favorite cyclist on the road. I am a cyclist.
Yep.
And I was also served as the president of the Board of Directors for the League of American Bicyclists for many years, and did a lot of nationally.
Awesome, you're an expert.
National advocacy, I'm also was, and no, am no longer, a certified league cycling instructor, where you teach vehicular cycling to people, to, so that they can share the road and ride their bicycles safely, and reduce the likelihood of being the one to cause a problem. Unfortunately, a lot of people do not ride like this, as you might be aware, if you are out on the roads. However, if you've ridden past me, you probably don't even remember, and that is the best possible situation.
Exactly.
Hmm.
A couple of things about bicycle using, using the full lane. I just want to throw that in there. I would do that if your passing me could cause problems, like coming across the Green Bridge, where I was, I had made a local person irate, because I went out in the middle of the lane for a very short period of time, to prohibit that person from passing me in an unsafe place.
Right.
Where I would, most likely, if they all of a sudden had to veer over to the, the right, they would have taken me out. And I know of a couple of cyclists who were killed by people who went around them at an unsafe place, and then saw somebody coming at them head-on, and came dashing back over, and then took the cyclist out.
Oh, dear.
So that's an, that's a really shitty situation.
Okay.
And when I go out, I'll signal that I'm going out, I go out, I look, try to make eye contact, and I'm like, you know, I'm doing this for a reason, just hold on, it's not going to take you, so I'm not going to slow you down, you're not going to be late to your meeting, I'm just trying to keep myself safe.
It's amazing how the road rage buttons get pushed.
You know, you bring up a really interesting point, and that is that people come out here, they're from the city, they're not used to driving in the country.
Well, even beyond that, people who drive cars should just be aware of any of the driving conditions that they're in. And you're right, Paul, these roads are narrow, and there are a lot of double-yellow lines. And many years ago, I wrote a letter to the paper about the double-yellow, after talking to the sheriff, or somebody from the CHP, I don't remember who it was. And there is, the way they, they figure out how to do the double-yellow lines is based on a vehicle passing a vehicle safely at posted speed.
Hmm.
Okay?
Hmm.
So think about it, I'm riding my bike, I'm going 15 miles an hour, you're driving your vehicle, you can go, you know, some of these speed limits are 55 out here.
Yeah, yeah.
It's crazy. And the letter of the law would say you cannot cross the double-yellow line. But the spirit is that there are places where there's plenty of adequate sightlines for you to go across the mumble strip for a minute, you know, a second, really, to go around me, and then return back into the lane as a solo cyclist, or maybe as two cyclists. Now, I'm not talking about these big packs of people, that's a whole different topic that I'm not going to get into. But if, but the problem is, is that there are people who are seemingly just clueless about physics. And they would cross the double-yellow line on a blind curve.
Oh, my.
And that is not, it, it happens, because they're like, oh, the cyclist is going so slowly, I just need to get around them, this is, this is a dreadful situation, oh, I must go, when they can just hold back for just a sec, several seconds, and get into a place where they can see what's coming on. Because the light, and the other thing that drives me nuts is when people go all the way into the other lane to pass me.
Oh, I thought cyclists would be happy about that.
That is unnecessary. That is a recipe, in some ways, for disaster, because what you're doing is you're putting yourself in the oncoming traffic lane for a period of time, and then if you have to correct on that, you're going to be making a dramatic shift back to the right.
Hmm, yeah.
So, you know, the, the law in the state of California is, give us three feet, which is not very much, and so if you're going 55 miles an hour and I'm going 15, I'd, I'd like five, I'd like five feet, I don't need 11 feet.
Mm-hmm.
That's a lane width.
Yeah.
I don't need that, and I don't want you to do that, because that is just silly, and unsafe, and unnecessary.
Well, except, I, I drive a very flat-fronted van, and if I'm doing 55 in that van, then there's a shockwave.
Well, you know.
I don't want to topple you over.
Off the road as a touring cyclist with full of tanners by a semi, because the wind just pushed me right off the side of the road.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, there are other issues out there, but, I mean, a responsible cyclist is going to be aware of intersections, that includes driveways, any place where there's going to be an intersection of traffic. I'm not talking about, like, where there's stop signs and stuff, but anywhere there's driveways, also, a good, responsible cyclist is going to not ride in the door zone, which means coming through the middle of downtown Point Reyes Station, I'm not going to be hugging over next to the parked cars, because what if somebody is bending down to pick something up off the floor, then it opens up their door, I'm going to hit the door, and that is a very, can cause very serious issues.
Yeah, so I think there is an issue with motorists' awareness of what bicyclists need, what bicyclists experience.
There is, but there's also this sort of cluelessness about a, a high percentage of the cyclists who are riding irresponsibly. They think, oh, if I just snuggle up next to these cars, I won't be in the way, that's unsafe, or if I just do this section on the wrong side of the road facing traffic, you know, that's not predictable, and that's not riding in a vehicular manner. If I ride my bicycle, and I follow the traffic laws as are stated, and I take into consideration my safety as a more vulnerable road user, because I'm on a bicycle, I'm not encased in steel, and I signal, and I, and I am predictable, and you know what I'm going to do, because I'm following the same rules of the road that you and I both allegedly understand. Oh.
Oh, yeah.
And then, I'm going to not have as many problems. But if I am doing things that are unpredictable, if you can't see me because I'm wearing my Johnny Cash bicycling outfit, and I don't have any lights on.
That's a whole nother issue, the outfits.
And I'm going into the shadows, because that cycling kit looked so good in the dressing room, but you can't see me on the road.
Yeah.
I mean, it's called conspicuity, it's basically being seen and then being recognized for what you are.
Yes.
And not being like, what is that?
Right, we can't make assumptions out there.
No, and sort of like, I want you to know, as far away as you can see, that I am up ahead of you on the road, I'm wearing my bright yellow, ugly-looking vest, I've got my little light flashing or solid, depending on who you talk to, but you can see that that red light is in the back, maybe I'm running a front light in the front, so that you can see me as I'm coming towards you, when you're trying to pull out of your driveway or from another intersection.
Yeah, lights are so helpful.
When I need to move out, I am doing so for a good reason, because there is debris on the side of the road, or I'm trying to get out in the middle of the lane so that you won't be likely to pass me in an unsafe situation. So, those are my two cents on the cycling thing, and, you know, the Marin County Bicycle Coalition and other groups do offer cycling, these, these cycling classes, to teach people how to ride vehiculally, but people are going to do what people are going to do.
Well, how do you?
I wanted to put in a good word for cyclists, because.
Oh, of course.
Now, I, I've been doing this for a really long time, and I, I just got a new bike, so I'm going to be out there riding a lot more, and I hope that when we, I'm talking to you guys, I'm talking to the listeners, and it's like, when you see me riding your bike, you'll think about a few things. One, probably you won't even remember passing me, which is the best possible situation.
Right.
But you will have seen me, hopefully.
Yeah.
And also that you will think that it might be the person who runs your radio station, it might be somebody's spouse, it might be.
Somebody's child, for sure.
Somebody loves that person.
And what I realized, especially when I'm on the tandem with Ken, when I can spend more time looking back, is that when you're looking at somebody's butt, you can basically minimize their presence as a being. But if they turn around and look at you in the face, and you have eye contact, it's a different, people respond and react very, very differently.
That's interesting.
But think about what you're doing out there.
Of course.
So that's my two cents on the cycling thing. It doesn't answer your questions at all, but it's.
Well, it just seems like there's a need to bridge this gap between the cyclists and the motorists. There may be laws in place, but people don't seem to be aware of them, and then, you know, the motorists especially, the, the road rage kicks in, and.
And now the, now the, the road rage kicks in with the cyclists, too, so.
Hmm.
And can I?
Double-edged sword.
Can I just say that, you know, cycling in the city, people do it, it's great, and they're commuting, blah, 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 and you're commuting to come to the station, no doubt, apart from having fun, but can we just say that all these guys who are out here are driving out here from somewhere else in their cars, parking somewhere, taking their bikes off, and going for a nice little spin in the country, while we, other people on the road, are trying to get on with our lives? And, and yet, there's this attitude, especially with the big groups, who are all out here having fun, and no, you know, of course, they're allowed to have recreational fun, why not? But the attitude that goes with that, with the big groups, who are out here having recreational fun and blocking everybody else, I think that's a problem.
I'll tell you a story, you know, my.
I'm going to take it offline, you guys, but I don't disagree with you, Paul, and I don't have an answer, and I have actually tried to do an interview with the folks from Divine Electric, because they're the ones that organized that big Wednesday ride. Nobody wants to talk to me about it, so.
Hmm.
Just saying, I think that.
That's too bad.
Dialogue is important.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's, there's definitely sort of this entitlement activity, but I will say that, just to throw one more thing in there, is that a lot of people actually do ride their bikes all the way from the city out here.
That's right.
And then all the way back. And then all the way back into the city. Not everybody is driving out, so.
Okay.
All right, bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, just, just a quick story, my, my stepson was driving down Levy Road, and a pack of bicyclists was on the other side of the road, coming towards him, and one of the cyclists lost control, and veered across, and ran into my stepson's car.
Wow.
And, you know, he, he had certain injuries, and, and damage to his bicycle, my stepson pulled over immediately, but what happened next is that the entire pack of cyclists came at him angrily, as if he had done something wrong. This was very scary.
Yeah.
And as it turned out, no, he was just driving down the road.
Somebody ran into me.
Yeah, and so I actually, you know, had to drive to the location and be with him, because, you know, it was, it was scary.
Yeah.
But ultimately, the cyclists, you know, insurance-wise, the cyclist was found to be at fault, and had to, you know, take care of.
Thank you.
Things himself, but, yeah, it's, it's definitely an issue around here.
Just having fun on the road. And so let's, let's wind this up, we still have five, four minutes or so.
So we talk about speeding, sharing the road.
Let's give us a call if you have thoughts about tonight's town hall meeting, 415-663-8492.
Garbage.
I thought we'd talk about, oh, garbage, yeah, well, we, yeah, overflowing garbage cans.
Okay, what were you thinking?
The long-range plans, the long-range suggestions, recommendations from the Alliance of Coastal Marin Villages. So these are existing policies that don't require action from the working group, which is the Alliance and the, you know, representatives. Do not expand highway capacity for motorized vehicles. So, no, no wider lanes, don't put new lanes in, don't put a freeway up the, as was proposed, having a freeway spur up Tamales Bay. Don't expand parking in county, state, or national parks, interesting.
So, it's curious to me that it says they don't require action, these existing policies don't require action, when I'm starting to think, are these good policies?
Do not significantly expand parking in the parks. I guess the idea is that if, if you think the parking lot's going to be full, then you won't come out.
It's so far away from everything.
Only if they know, only if they know. Reduce village congestion by managing parking as local stakeholders choose through a public process, okay, well, yeah. Improve walk and bike access to the villages and parks, okay, finish. Complete the bike pedestrian path from Central Marin to West Marin, well, now, there's an idea. Improve transit access, use digital message signs to advise tour, along 101, to advise tourists about parking limitations in parks in Coastal Marin. Yeah, okay. And adopt traffic calming measures in the villages, such as speed bumps, narrower lanes, bulb-outs at intersections, whatever that means, and blinking yellow lights. Yeah. Policies needed to implement the recommendations, require all county and state agencies, and urge federal agencies to give general notice and hold public meetings in Coastal Marin before deciding on any changes, whether new construction or repairs, for example, Green Bridge. What's happening with the Green Bridge? Oh, that's an old. Yeah, anyway, so they, they have these recommendations, East Shore, oh, here's the history of recommendations. East Shore Community Plan, adopted in 1987, was to add painted crosswalks, off-street parking must be included in new developments. Well, not many new developments, except like the Marshall Tavern, of course. Anyway, that's what will be happening tonight, that's what we'll all be talking about and listening to, and thank you to everyone.
Yeah, get involved.
For listening, thank you for calling. Do get involved and come to the town hall meeting, get there before 6:30, if you, if you want to get.
Try and get the red button, Stephen.
All right.
Red button, number four, number four red button, that's it, push it.
Thank you so much. And, yeah, be there, and they'll be talking about this, and thanks to Mike Maguire and Dennis Rodoni and all the other officials who are going to be turning up. Then, KWMR does not take a stand on any of the issues discussed on Let's Talk. Opinions expressed on this program are those of the hosts and callers, and don't necessarily reflect the views of KWMR, its Board of Directors, underwriters, or members. We'll be back next Thursday with another topic, and meanwhile, we'll see you tonight at the town hall.
Hey, tonight it is.